We'll go ahead and get started. I actually stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Goble.
Here.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Here.
Let the record show we have seven present with no absent. Moving on to consent agenda, I need a motion and a second to excuse Counselor Nash from the special meeting we had on the 11th.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the excuse of Counselor Nash. Approval of minutes, consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record go, we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the consent agenda of minutes. At this time, I will turn it over to City Manager Ray Towery to go over the city council meeting rules.
We'd like to thank everyone who's joining us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting, we have some instructions to help in case you're new to using Microsoft Teams. If you notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, the second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated, well, if we had the picture, there'd be a yellow arrow, but we don't have the picture. But it's a chat bubble icon. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss this evening. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon. It is the equivalent of raising your hand. The chair or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter your name, address, phone number, and topic to address the council. We will ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat points made by a previous speaker, instead simply state that you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting. So at this point, if we could give people some time to choose that bubble icon, if there's something on the agenda they want to speak to, and then they'll, they'll enter their information in.
Let me know when we want to move forward.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think we at least have one member of the press on, and we're probably okay to move forward.
At this time, I'll ask for recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions, and I'll wait to see anybody comes online. I do not see anybody that's came online from all indications, so I'll move forward. On old business, request for council action, city attorney contract.
I'll go ahead and just turn this over to, City Attorney Snyder.
Just basically, as requested, basically just to take what was, what we've been doing and put it into an employment contract. Basically, taking from what the charter has and what my appointment has and what the resolutions for budget has and that sort of thing. I, I put this together, and it, I think it reflects what is currently in place in those documents. And so now it's in, in one, one agreement.
This time, I'll open up for any questions or comments from the city, the council. We have no comments or questions. At this time, I need a directive from council. I motion a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the contract for city attorney. Julie, you have a question?
Just in.
Yeah, sorry. Online, we can't hear who's making the motion or the second. Could you please let me know who that was?
Yeah, it was Counselor Gerson, seconded by Counselor Gorley.
Thank you.
And, Mayor, I don't know, it's, it's already in play with the resolutions that are already on, on the budget and everything, but it does involve money, so I didn't know if you wanted a roll call. It's the same as what we already got.
Mr. Mayor, not everyone has their mics on.
Not right now, it is. Try and save battery.
You have to push the button.
Um, okay, so that said, let's go ahead and do a roll call for the contract of our city attorneys.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Goble.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let the record show we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the city attorney's contract. At this time, request for city council action for city man, well, city manager's contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've gone through the processes outlining the policy for both, for my evaluation. I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time to do that and for the constructive feedback. Moving forward, contracts is generally renewed annually. Again, you saw the draft of this last, excuse me, at the last meeting, and no changes other than the dates.
I'm the council director.
So moved, as recommended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the city manager's contract.
Did we need a roll call on that as well?
I don't think we need a roll call on that.
Since we just did the one for me, I can't say that you don't. Just as well do it, make, be, it's nothing more than being consistent, but it's, with the, but the, the money is already in the, in the budget.
We'll go ahead and do a roll call, Julie, just for record purposes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah.
Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Counselor Goble.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. Let the record show we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the city manager's contract. At this time, I will read the proclamation, declaration of candidacy of canvassing of the election. Proclamation, whereas there have been put to the voters of City of Sweet Home petitions to fill vacancies on the city council and, whereas declarations of candidacy were voted upon in the statewide general election, November 3rd, 2020, and, whereas the result of said election has been counted, canvassed, and returned. Now, therefore, I, Greg Mahler, Mayor of City of Sweet Home, do proclaim as follows. The outcome of the voting of the council positions described above was Theo White, 845, Dave Trask, 1960, Dylan Richards, 1762, James Goble, 1194, Lisa Gorley, 1883, Courtney Nash, 1408, David Lowman, 1327, George Jaeger, 524, Jaleita Sanchez, 1991, Rideen, 108, overvotes, 52, undervotes, 6,734. Dave Trask, Lisa Gorley, and Jaleita Sanchez will fill the four-year terms. Dylan Richards will fill the two-year term on the city council proclaimed this eighth day of December, 2020. Moving on to the next proclamation, proclamation canvassing of the voting of the police levy measure. Whereas there has been referred to the voters of the City of Sweet Home Measure 22-185 bearing the following title, Sweet Home Five-Year Police Levy. Should the city continue police operating levy beginning in fiscal year 2020 to maintain the current service for another five years, which the measure was voted upon at the general action held on November 3rd, 2020, and whereas the results of said election have been counted, canvassed, and returned, and whereas the mayor shall issue the proclamation as follows. Now, therefore, I, Greg Mahler, Mayor of City of Sweet Home, do proclaim as follows. Section 1, the canvassing of the voting of the measure above described shows the following results. Yes, 3,533, no, 1,231, overvotes, 1, undervotes, 195. And the majority of those who voted on the measure were, were in favor of it. Section 2, this measure becomes effective July 1, 2021. Section 3, the city recorder shall publish or post this proclamation and shall file it with the measure. Proclamation this eighth day of December, 2020. Next proclamation. The proclamation canvassing the voting of the library levy measure. Whereas there have been referred to the voters of the City of Sweet Home Measure 22-184 bearing the following title, Sweet Home Five-Year Library Levy. Should the city continue the library operating levy beginning in fiscal year 2022 to maintain the current services for another five years, which the measure was voted upon at the general action held on November 3rd, 2020, and whereas the results of the saddle action have been counted, canvassed, and returned, and whereas the mayor shall issue the proclamation as follows. Now, therefore, I, Greg Mahler, Mayor of City of Sweet Home, do proclaim as follows. Section 1, the canvassing of the voting of the measures above described shows the following results. Yes, 3,460, no, 1,291, overvotes, none, undervotes, 209. And the majority of those who voted on the measure were in favor of it. Section 2, this measure becomes July 1, 2020. Section 3, the city recorder shall publish or post this proclamation and shall file it with the measure. Proclamation this eighth day of December, 2020. I think that's typo.
And section 2.
That should be 2021.
Right, yeah, so section 2, the measure becomes effective July 1, 2021, apologies.
So, so as amended. Request for council action, per screen or, request for council action ordinance number 12 for 2020 business life ordinance, 845.
We brought this back before you, I believe we've made changes as requested. I did receive one letter from a member of the community. I've placed it on your desk, as well as an email exchange with Mr. Legg, Jack Legg. If you want to take some time to review that. Other than that, I will turn it over to Blair.
As found in your packet, the ordinance has been revised. It has been revised to be less, sorry, and the director is just collecting information. The ordinance now only requires information to be submitted in order to obtain a license. And a license can only be denied if the application is incomplete, the business submits false or fraudulent information, the activity would not comply with city or state laws, or the activity would endanger property or rights of the public's health or safety. The draft has also been changed to indicate the city may be increased or decreased on an annual basis by the city council, and, and then there's some other minor changes that were made after consulting with the city attorney. I am happy to take any other questions you may have.
Time to open up for questions or comments of the council.
Still not understanding the purpose of trying to require somebody to fill this out and potentially pay money to have information to get ahold of somebody when, when there's something catastrophic or something going on that chances are they're going to know just as fast as anybody else.
This year has, has, it's been extremely difficult to get business information so that I can get information out to them. And so that's one of the reasons why this has come forward. The fee is completely up to council, that's set by resolution and completely within the council's discretion on, on setting that. So I, I haven't really made much in the way of a recommendation on fee, I believe there's been some discussion among the council about why would that fee should be. So, the attempt here is purely at getting information. In the past, when we've met and talked about it, the council has indicated a desire for this to be an ordinance that could be enforced rather than a voluntary program. We could do a voluntary program if that was the wish of the council. But with the, with the requirement, it gives it a little bit more teeth and, and makes it so that we can, we have a bit more likelihood of success of getting information. Voluntary programs tend to be a little bit more difficult to get people to give reading information. But if made required, it's more successful if it's amended.
So, how's this going to work if it becomes required? You got to pay for it, you decide you don't want to be part of it, and then it becomes a fine. You go to court, and then somebody decides not to pay it, like some of these other ordinance fines that we have around town. I mean, how much animosity is this going to cause with the business owners? And they just decide, you know what, I don't want to deal with it anymore, I'm done.
So far, with the business owners I've talked to, I haven't found anybody that is actually against having a business license ordinance because there's, in so many different places, there are various regulations and policies that their partners often have, often lenders, and so forth, who are looking for business licenses. And they have to basically explain why there isn't one. So it's, it's pretty typical. It's, it's seen as, if, if you are in business, this is information that you're trying to get out to the public anyway, because you want people to know how to get ahold of you and how to purchase your products and your services. And so we're essentially asking for that information that they already want to get out.
So what, Google and everything else.
I've actually had a couple of businesses reach out to me, and funny enough, it's not the ones that I'm painting. And they've expressed extreme irritation at this. They see it as government imposition, that, they said, the fire department already has information on record, they're already subject to regulations, and they saw no purpose or value to their business in doing it. And they were very adamant.
That is, I mean, that's certainly a point of view. As we've mentioned before, options were presented to council before about a voluntary program, that's certainly still on the table, if that's the direction you wish to go. But when it comes down to it, it's, if those are, those are complaints I can do nothing about. This is, we've done our best to make sure that this ordinance is purely about information, and if that's not understood by folks when they, they read through it, I, I'm not sure what more I can do. But I would, I'm happy to make whatever changes you wish. Ultimately, it comes down to a question of whether this is an ordinance the council wants to have in place. As a staff member, I can only say that I can see the value of it.
Stand, just to stand a little bit corrected, the fire department does not have all the information for every business in every facility in Sweet Home. Because I can tell you, there's a lot of times we've showed up on scene and we have no, what's it called, question owner or some, someone to call. So a lot of times, we will create damage because we have no choice but to enter the premise without waiting for somebody to let us in. Ideally, it would be nice if all the businesses would invest in a Knox box, which is a little to no investment. That would solve that problem real fast. It's like a three, four dollar investment. That would be the ideal situation, but just for the, for the record, you know, not, we don't have everybody's information on record. And furthermore, I was actually, other than, I also, Mr. Legg's letter that I received, but I got bombarded by a lot of phone calls from a lot of businesses that were not in favor of this at all. So, I'm just, well, you know, I, there, there was a lot that were not exactly in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, I remember why it was brought up this last time. It was when COVID happened, businesses were shut down, the state offered some grant money, and we were all trying to figure out which businesses qualified for the specific grants, and trying to round up those names just between us, trying to contact people. And I think that's why this was brought up once again. So in that regard, I see the value of it, but I also, I understand, and that's why in the past I voted against it, but I understand Mr. Legg's concerns and the privacy concerns, but I wonder if there is a way to go about having some information for some of the businesses on hand to help them. But I understand their concern with government having that information. That makes sense to me as well. But I know we, we were at a loss with some of these people that missed out on grants that could have received grants when things were shut down.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I think a lot of it has to do with just the language of when we call it a license or a registration. I would encourage maybe to take just a couple of minutes, and I think when you read the email exchange between Mr. Legg and I, where I explained it to him, he was like, oh, okay. Our struggle has simply been trying to help local businesses because we don't know they're there. Whether it was the Eclipse and helping them to prepare for what we were being told by, you know, from the state of thousands of people potentially trapped in our community and, and a lack of resources. Again, to trying to help businesses COVID. And again, moving forward, Blair's working on a grant program in which we will get PPE for businesses, and we will be able to distribute it to them for free. But when we can't reach them because we don't know they exist, or we don't have contact information, it makes helping them very difficult. I think if you'll read through the exchange with Mr. Legg, when I explained to him, the only information we would be collecting was public information already, and the purpose of it, I, I think you can read, he was more, he was agreeable to it, at least at that point, and understood what we were trying to do. So, that's just for your information. Again, we bring this forward, whatever four of you tell us is what we're going to do, and we can go move forward from there.
Counselor Goble.
I appreciate the fact of you took a lot of the stuff out of there that we talked about. After the exchanges with people in town and business owners and things like that, I, I think it's a good idea, I thought it was, I still think it is, but I, we should move more towards along the lines of if you have a business in town and you want to be privy to these special grants and helping out and getting help back from the city and things like that, then by all means, come down, fill out a, a application and get the business license and here in town, but if you don't, I'm, I'm kind of on the, on board both sides here because, I mean, I feel that unless somebody just says no, I mean, we're going to tell them they can't have a business, they can't employ people that's here in town, they can't. It's such a double-edged sword, but. It's such a double edged sword, but I'm on defense of where if they want to do it, volunteer to come in and fill out an application, then this, this other half of this reward could go with this potentially. And if they don't, they don't. That's kind of where I stand on that now.
As what city manager Ray Tower, a lot of people I talked to, I basically expressed the same thing that we weren't trying to get too in depth with their personal information. I kind of like the idea of the voluntary side of things, then to make it mandatory personally, I could probably go for that.
Mr. Mayor, I think that that, I think it's more reasonable because if we've heard from our community that they're not interested in it and we've heard more from people saying they're not interested, then I think that's probably volunteer information. If they want to find out about grants, great, give us the information, but yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I got a comment on, on the very, I think it's the, let me get back to where it is. It says something about the city calls it a privilege to carry on a particular business or pursue a certain occupancy, occupation within the city. That doesn't, I think that's a right along with being a privilege. I mean, you know, to me, it, it makes, I, I don't like this setup the way it is. I don't. And then I also, on, let me go down to where the page is. Okay, a violation of this chapter constitutes a violation may be prosecuted under the provision of chapter 9.36 and any amendments thereto. Each day evaluation of a provision of this chapter shall constitute a separate offense. In addition, the city may enjoy, enjoy and the continued operation of the business. So the remedies which include penalties herein provided for in this chapter are sectors or sections thereof shall be commutative and not exclusive and shall be in addition to any other remedies available to the city. What does that mean?
Means you can, if they don't do it, it's set up so that you can take them, give them a citation and take them to municipal court. And the fine there is a maximum of $500 per day.
Wonderful. I'm not for this.
I, Mr. Mayor, I think when we put the violation and penalties in there, that we're taking away what we were talking about with the information.
Well, also, if we're going voluntarily, all this has to be amended anyways. This violation has to be pulled out.
If you're, if you're asking for a voluntary program, no ordinance necessary.
Right. We would just institute it internally.
And so back in our workshops, one of the suggestions was a voluntary program for, that was an option, and that still is an option.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I think we've heard a unanimous consensus from all seven of you. And I would wager that if you simply asked for a motion, it would die and we could probably save a lot of time.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Mayor, I got one more comment. Blair, how many people, how many businesses did you talk to? Just give me a rough estimate. How many did you talk to? You said you talked to businesses. How many was that?
So this is over the past year that I've been looking at.
Okay.
So there's numerous businesses that I have talked to.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, thanks.
If I could remind counsel, the chamber did actually come and request that we, we look at this. It was some time ago, certainly over a year ago, which is what started the whole conversation, so.
I'm going to show this as a dead ordinance and we're going to move on. We'll go to a volunteer. So next up is second reading of ordinance bills, request for council action, ordinance number 13 for 2020 vacant building ordinance by title only.
Ordinance Bill number 13 for 2020, ordinance number, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to the registration, maintenance, safety and security of vacant buildings in commercial and industrial zones.
Any questions, counsel?
So if we look on page 67, I think that our goal is always to make codes and ordinance is uncomplicated. Oh, I'm sorry.
Too many things to remember. And that we communicate exactly what we want to communicate. So I am concerned that, page 67, 8.2.0, 2.0.050, the inspection, and the next one on the local president's or property manager required. We've already talked about that. If you look at 8.2.0.030, it describes the maintenance that's designed.
Essentially what this requires is the owner or the property manager would, would need, they themselves would need to do the inspection. And so if there is a problem, we would go to them and say, hey, have you been inspecting as required? What's the state of the building? And, and we would verify at that time that's in compliance. Where this isn't proactively going out to inspect a building to see if they're compliant.
Mr. Mayor. Now, is this inspection, is this like for, to try to sell the property? Or is this just like a yearly inspection to where if it's empty, then nobody's going in there, period? And we're worried about it that way?
This is the, this inspection is something that the owner, the owner or property manager would do based on the, what the requirements in the ordinance itself. So it talks about the windows being in lockable condition. Doors also moving and the those things that are in the ordinance.
Is this different than standard codes that buildings have to go by anyways for businesses?
Yes. Because right now, the only time any, any building inspection goes on is when it's a new construction. There's not any inspection program for existing buildings.
I'm just going to, if I could remind, the, the purpose of this was so that building owners maintain commercial buildings in rentable condition and usable condition.
Any other questions? Counselor Goble.
That's okay. I, I like this a lot, but I think it, for me, is this, is this going to be a code enforcement thing? A hundred percent code enforcement? Because I don't see it as a hundred percent code enforcement. As code enforcement, I don't, I don't really have that big of an issue with it because that means somebody's going to complain. Code enforcement could come out and do their job and then start, start the process of, hey dude, or ma'am, whoever, you got to come down here, pick up the trash outside your building and we're going to start finding you. You know, you got broken windows, we can't have that, yada, yada, yada. But if it's something, because I, when I read through, I see it, I kind of feel two different things. I feel like some, most of it's code enforcement, a lot of it is more like the city is going to dig their claws into you and, you know, and we're, we, I don't know. We got, we got to do something, but I don't know fully if this is everything that we need to do. Unless it's based more on code enforcement, in my opinion.
So this is not, the, the way the ordinance is written, it talks about enforcement happening through code enforcement and it talks about a lot about the city manager or design. So it does leave flexibility for city staff on enforcing that. But any, I guess, the year to year terminology clause that the city would be putting in on this is purely at in the enforcement end of things, trying, because we are limited in what options we have to actually enforce something like this, as ultimately comes down to fine. So it, I don't have any other staff besides code enforcement officer that would be doing this work. And the only other thing I can think of is that, is that they could, could enforce this would be, I mean, the city manager can designate other people, sure. But, but I don't know what else I would call it besides code enforcement because it's not criminal law.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I feel that there's been a lot of abuse of our community for a long time that's brought this group together to make a decision like this. We're talking about people who are not good community members or good team players when it comes to our main street and our community. They've acted in bad faith. And so if they're a little uncomfortable, too bad. Everybody in our community is uncomfortable with what they're doing. And so I'm in favor of this. I'm very comfortable with saying, hey, no more. You can't take advantage of us anymore. So.
Mr. Mayor, I ain't got a problem with holding somebody to something like this, but I think we need to start outside the buildings as well. Because we got a bunch of people running up and down the streets that are helping destroy the outsides of these buildings with garbage and just bad appearance. I mean, you've talked to businesses that have looked to come here, but they don't like the persona of this town. And I think before the buildings is a huge factor. I think we need to get some other stuff cleaned up in this town too, so that way we can get people actually wanting to be here. Getting the streets cleaned up, trees in the center and stuff like that, and making it look like it used to.
Well, I agree with you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I am in favor of an ordinance like this. I just would like it to be clearer to me, you know, this is what we think needs to happen to the building. And if it doesn't, this is what's going to happen. And I think when we start approving ordinances that have a lot of wordage in them, that we, how are we going to comply, have people comply with this? How are we going to know that they're going to register? It says they will register. If we're not having somebody go out and check and make sure their building is registered, which Blair says we're not going to, how do we know that then?
I didn't say if we weren't going to check to see if the building is registered, if we do inspection. So the, the ordinance specifies how, how a building is, comes into this, comes into, how this ordinance takes effect on the building. Complaints about a, an ordinance to, or complaints about a building to the code enforcement officer can bring it into this program. The code enforcement, the code enforcement officer's own patrols and him noticing that the building may be vacant can also bring it into that. It starts with basically contacting the owner and saying, hey, it looks like it's vacant. This is what you're required to do. So there, it is laid out in the ordinance. The problem with ordinance is I'm, I'm not sure how to make it more clear. Because if you, if you simplify the language too much, then, then it becomes less, less useful, I guess you could say. We do need some language to dictate what people are required to do and what we do about it. Unfortunately, that takes a fair amount of language. I, if you have requests for trimming things out and you have suggestions on what those things could be, I'm happy to do what I can to trim it. I'm not exactly sure what I can remove it from.
Well, I do appreciate the changes you made in it already.
And I'm happy to think more of that.
I think this is a good starting point. I, I do have a concern about, you know, the enforcement part of it. I think we definitely need some teeth and it's a starting point for us. So I, I think if we can move forward with this, but we, over time, amendments will be needed and some changes for sure. Give them more teeth and get this, a lot more issues covered and taken care of.
And to be sure, we are going to have materials that are written in more of a, a normal language format when we are advertising this, this program and what, what property owners will need to do. I, I'm not in favor of just mailing out copies of the ordinance. We, we certainly will have it up for, for the public to view and read, but having explanatory materials along with it will go a long way toward getting compliance and helping people understand.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Counselor Gurley that people have taken advantage of Sweet Home for a long time. And so I'm for an ordinance, ordinance like this. But I also appreciate Counselor Gerson's desire to make it a little more user friendly. Even if we do a summary to businesses, it'd be great to have an ordinance that's easily understood. Is there any way that Counselor Gerson can provide some, I'd be interested in her?
I just, well, I, I say, I think part of it's redundant, so, but that's just my opinion, so.
Any other questions, counselors, or recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, so moved as recommended.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll need a directive to move this to third and final reading on January 12. So you need a directive, a directive, if you want to move this.
I think, I think that's what Counselor Gurley's motion was.
As recommended.
Yeah.
My apologies. The motion is second, move this forward to January 12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's show, I have six ayes with one nay, moving forward for third and final review on January 12 by title only. This time we'll move on to reports of committees, any reports from, any of the committees.
Mr. Mayor, the charter committee will be meeting in January. We're going to get back on track. And Chamber of Commerce meets on Thursday night this week.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's been pointed out that we need to read it by title only.
Do we skip by that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't read it at the beginning. Yeah.
Trying to move things forward.
Yeah, I read it at the beginning.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we're good. I apologize.
Counselor Goble.
I, I do have, it means we backtracked there for a second. I'm going to hang on to that. So when Counselor Gurley made her motion, was that moved as recommended by counsel or move as recommended by in the, 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 oh my goodness, in the ordinance that was just put out?
It would have been number two. Staff recommends motion, option two, motion to approve ordinance bill number 13 for 2020 as presented.
Okay, I had a misunderstanding. I thought the recommendation was with, with what we just talked about, with the changes. So I am a no.
So, so I'm going to have to ask that you specify the changes you want. Because we had broad discussion, but there was no specific language that, that anybody asked to be changed. Well, then, that was what Counselor Gerson was speaking of, making it more user friendly and through there, so.
Well, my recommendation would be that we remove two sections as being redundant.
That's what needs to be clarified for, for staff.
Not that it would actually technically matter by January.
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Snyder, the motion was made, it was seconded, it was voted. To revisit that, it requires more than just to bring up a misunderstanding. It's okay.
It has to be brought up by the people that you gotta watch on who, who makes the first motion to bring it back up. If you ask what you're going to do to reconsider, can't be the one who lost out on the first vote.
Well, everybody's on the prevailing side except Mrs. Gerson.
So.
So, but.
So, making motion to reconsider. Correct. So that, so, um, if, if you want to lead with that motion, then there would have to be a vote on that motion to reconsider.
So I like to motion, make a motion to reconsider. Um, I gotta get back to the title. My vote on vacant, vacant building ordinance.
So, yeah, so what would have to be is you would make a motion to reconsider. The motion would have to be seconded.
I'll second.
It would then be open for discussion. There would then be a vote on whether there is, whether you reconsider the original vote or not.
A motion second. All in favor to open this back up?
Well, so you have, you have a motion from Counselor Goble.
Yeah.
And you have a second from Counselor Nash.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And now you have discussion on whether or not to do that.
Correct. So now there would be discussion on whether or not to reconsider and then a vote on whether you reconsider.
So, Mr. Mayor, I believe that that's why we have three readings of the ordinance, so that if there are any changes to be made, which is why I brought it up tonight at the second reading, if there are any changes to be made, it can be made the third time we read it, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Even though the three, three times drive us crazy, that's what I think, why I think it's there.
The, the problem is we don't know, there's been no consensus on how you would want it presented for the third reading.
I see.
We, the open second, let's open it back up for discussion.
But will it change the outcome? We have four to three, and it's still going to come up next time. But I haven't heard any different arguments than what was in the first time we had the reading. And so.
Counselor Gerson brought up the redundance. I think that's where they, they would like to amend according to that.
Mr. Mayor, so if there's, if there's two sections that are basically the same thing, why do they have to be in there? Is that a law?
This is the way, this is the way it was drafted, was that way. Now, I, to my knowledge, there, there are probably portions of this ordinance that appear redundant, but in my opinion, they are, are actually redundant. But I, I'm happy to look into that if you tell me what the sections are and, and where, where it's repeated twice.
Well, I think Counselor, uh, she, she gave us the, what she thought was the same.
She mentioned one point in, in the ordinance where it says those things, but I, I need to compare it to.
Okay.
Another, the other point where she believes it, where you believe that it's in there. Yeah. So, I, I, in drafting this, I tried to be as clear and make sure that it's not overly wordy. It's not, not that easy to do. But I, if I did put something in there twice unnecessarily, I, I'm definitely happy to look at it. I just want it to be clear as to what version to the bottom.
Well, Mr. Mayor, so if, if we're going to have a third reading and we can address this then, and then we can decide and then we finish it at the next meeting after the next one. So we have one on the 12th. Is that when the first one is in, in January? And then we have one on whatever day that is? So we could, we could discuss this and Counselor Gerson can get ahold of you and, and figure out what, what she thinks is, what she figures out that they, or seems to think that, that some of them are repetitive. And if that's the case, then we could, we could address that when the next time and come, because I'm okay with that, if that's a concern.
Well, what is it that's in eight 20050 for inspection? Was it that you didn't think they should be inspected at all? Or was that already addressed?
No, for me, I don't think that we should require them to keep a log and, and, and an inspection. That, that particular part, I don't think. But I think if you look at eight point two oh oh six oh, the requirements in that are exactly the same as the requirements in security. I mean, you're asking for a sign outside of who owns the property, et cetera, et cetera. It, to me, it reads the same. Now, that's.
So, basically what we do is, Blair, why don't you go back and, and review for, make sure there's no redundancy. And if there isn't, bring it back on the third reading. Does that satisfy it?
Well, except you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I know.
So, you, we're happy to do that, absolutely. But you'll have to hold a vote on the motion to reconsider. And then we can move forward in that manner if that's how the council would like to move forward.
Okay.
So, I guess at the end, at the end of the, end of the thing is just humoring me a little bit because I want my vote to be no, whether it's going to change the outcome or not of what Counselor Gurley wants. I just want my vote to be no. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, and I was going to say, we should humor them. It's our last night and it's okay for us to let them change their vote. So I'm okay with reconsidering.
Yeah, motion to reconsider. Nice call.
No, really, it's our last night.
Okay, motion to reconsider. Second.
Yes.
Cat first and second.
So Counselor Goble, Goble has a motion on the floor. Counselor Nash seconded.
Okay.
So we've had discussion. So now you can, I think you are okay to just call for a vote at this point.
Okay.
And strictly to reconsider before it goes to third reading.
Okay. Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote?
Oh, I'll be the naughty one. I gotta take my turn.
You thought it was going to be easy, huh?
At least we have fun when we're doing it. Okay, so you've got your wish, Counselor Goble.
Thank you.
This is now a new motion to move for third and final reading on January 12. Are you a directive?
Is this a vote no?
Get the vote no now.
So if it consolidated, um, oh.
If the eight 20060 was consolidated with eight 20040, would that be okay?
I, yeah, I think so. I think it's, it's redundant. It's, a lot of information is in one place that you want in a second place, and it's not necessary. I'm sorry to be so picky about it, but.
I just had a, a reference. So where in eight 20060, it just said, you need to do this under, these are the requirements for the, for the notice that you vote, see this previous section. The example, that's the fight. The reason why you have those two things separate is, is basically for ease of use in enforcement. Because you, you see the headings, and you're like, oh, here's the heading for security. This is what they have to do for security. Oh, here's the heading for local presence or property management required. This is what you have to do for that. And so it, it makes it easier to use when you're actually using your ordinance. For casual reading, obviously, it's not, not very much fun to read, but it's, it's mainly infining the information with use. But I can, I can accomplish that with a reference. And just say, see paragraph A of eight point 20060.
I just want to bring up one last thing. Remember, one of the things that we talk about in our council meetings and things like that is to make our ordinances and things like that extremely more user friendly, like it's been brought up. And I think we should always try to remember that, too, that, that's one thing that we said we'd work towards. I'm not saying anything against it. I just think it does need to be, if somebody came in, they wanted to do something, then they have to hold to this. I'd like them to be able to go through it the first, maybe second time, and be able to fully understand it before they got to come down here and ask a thousand questions. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, as I, as I think about that explanation about referencing, and I think about reading something and gathering information for my own purposes, I don't mind as long as the points throughout are consistent. But if I have to go back and look at something up and reference up, it gets, that gets tedious. It gets, oh.
Thank you. You have hall monitor. That gets tedious and frustrating. And I know we have people within our population that don't always track so well, or get frustrated easy because they're maybe agitated when they come and look at this in the first place. And so if it, as long as the language is not conflicting, and it supports each other as you read through this, it just reinforces the thought. And it may seem a little redundant, but I see some points in here that are slightly different. And I, I don't want to make, try to streamline it in such a way that it makes it harder for folks, if that makes any sense.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick. I, I think one thing that might be worth just talking about in, in this, and I see where Counselor Gerson's talking about certain sections that sound very familiar. The key, I believe, when you're looking through how an ordinance is written are the components of the ordinance. And when you have a component that you're looking for, the sections that come below that are descriptors of that component. So, for instance, eight point two zero point zero two zero is registration. Do you want registration to take place? And then this would explain to you what that registration would look like. So, and then you have maintenance. Are you going to want, do you want the ordinance to require that there be maintenance that takes place? And if so, how is that going to look? Security, do you want the buildings to be secure? And how will that look? Do you want the landowner to have to do some inspection? How would that look? Do you want them to have to have a local presence in the community or some type of local property management to deal with these issues? And that's how they would look. So, while I understand sometimes they can be repetitive, I think the key that we want to look at is really, do you, because each section is trying to explain the context of the, of the content or the component of each ordinance. So I would almost encourage you to look at them as separate, completely separate pieces. And, and a lot of that is going to have to deal with our ability to enforce them. Because if the code is in any way unclear, our courts are going to favor, um, the not favor the city in what we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance. Hope that helps.
Well, what I went through, I, I guess I'm, I didn't see any redundancy, but man, that just was me. I understand Counselor Goble saying to simplify that, but on the same token, the less you write sometimes causes more problem in the end run. So I kind of think you start with, start with something and you work forward one way or the other to, to make it even better. So this is not the final copy over time. I think over time, there'll be changes, amendments to this, and probably more with more teeth to it with this community, in my opinion. But I, we gotta start somewhere. So I, I didn't have a problem with this as far as the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I got a, I got a question. On the, on the inspection part of this, you're saying that they have to do this once monthly. How are you gonna, how are you gonna make that happen?
So again, it's all going to be complaint based. So if someone's out looking for a building to start their business with, or in, or put a business or relocate, uh, and, and they can't find a suitable building, they will come to us, or they could come to us and say, you guys don't have any buildings for us to look at. And that's when it would look at, okay. Now, essentially, that's a complaint. We will then follow through on enforcing the ordinance. And part of that would be, look, we, the goal of this is to hold building owners accountable for their buildings so that the community can grow, so that we can experience economic development, so that we can be a place that businesses want to be. That's simply a mechanism where we can then go in and say, look, you should have been inspecting this once a month, or if in third reading, you change it to once a quarter, or whatever that, that may be. But it's a, it's a mechanism in order to help hold people accountable for what you're trying to accomplish with this ordinance.
It puts the obligation on the property owner to do the work.
Right.
And it relieves staff, city staff of the burden of doing these inspections out of obligations, which could be a lot of time. Essentially, it's only going to become an issue, or they're only going to be asked for their inspection record if there's a problem. And if there's no problem with the property, they're, they're good.
So, it's, so it's an ordinance that we're not really going to enforce unless somebody wants to use the property, or buy the property, or rent the property, and then we, then we actually say to somebody, but we want to see your log for the last 18 months to show that you've done the inspections. And if they haven't done 18, 18 inspections, then what?
So, there, there, much like other code enforcement activities, this is, it's complaint based, it's when there's a, when there's a problem noticed by the city staff that it comes in for. If they don't comply, so say, say we, we learn that there's a problem with the building, and, and it's, and the building has been registered with this, with this ordinance, and they, they've started the process. We know about the building, we know what the vacancy, we know what the condition is. If, if we come to that, which we see that there's a problem and it's clear that they have not been checking on it, you know, say the, the windows are all busted open or something like that, it's obvious that they're not actually inspecting it if, if it has these issues and, and they haven't fixed that. So then the enforcement angle of this ordinance will come to that. And that's laid out in, in the enforcement, the penalty part. So there are fines, ultimately there to be a lien on the property. This is all designed not to rid revenue, but to incite the owner to fix the problem.
And if, I can just add real quick. Again, our goal through any of this is not penalties and fines. Our goal is compliance. So we always enforce through education whenever possible, probably even in some cases, maybe more so than we should. But we always try to work to educate and gain compliance that way first and foremost, before we would ever consider any kind of, of penalty.
I look at this as every time we meet, we talk about the importance of Main Street. We talk about our community ID and how people feel about themselves, and as councils, our responsibility to change that story. And this is part of making that change. We can't complain and not do anything to make a difference. And some people aren't going to like it, but that's okay. I think there's going to be a lot of people that do like it. And that's our responsibility. Because if we don't do this, or we don't do something like it, we can't complain about what's happening on Main Street.
Mr. Mayor, so are we going to move this forward for the third reading with the suggestions that may come up between Counselor Gerson and, and the staff? Or are we going to beat this to death for a while longer?
I'm, I'm going to say you have to direct us as a council to the changes you want.
You make, you make a motion as amended.
Right. So, so you would, as a councils, make a motion with changes to eight point zero, or eight point two zero point whatever. And then we would make those changes for the next reading. I, I don't think it would be appropriate protocol to say, we're going to pass it, and then you guys work on it. And I think you have to see what you're passing in order to, to move it forward.
So you need to make a motion to, as far as I'm understanding right now, to remove any redundancies as amended, to move forward to final reading on January 12, by any directive of council.
So I will, I will. So I will, I will say that, what you said.
I'm gonna have nightmares because of you guys tonight.
Why you get paid the big bucks?
Not you.
So, if you were to pass it with that motion, or the direct staff, or... And I, doing it and looking for something that I feel is, problem with that being is, I already viewed it and tried not to put any finger down to it. So, it, it seems to be a matter of a difference of opinion on what the redundancy part is, because I, where, where one person sees redundancy, I see things that are slightly different. And so I, I hate to be stickler or jerk on this, I, I would be happy to meet with any counselors to kinda go over the ordinance and see what can be trimmed out or what can be changed, but I, I need a little more than just remove the redundancy.
So there, you either make a motion to move this for third and final reading on January 12th, as, as it's wrote.
Which we have done, haven't we?
Well, once.
And then we rescind it.
Or you, like, you can make a motion with amended, letting Blair know what, what amendment you want done. There's your options.
I, I just wanted to vote no. That's, that's all I wanted.
I think, I think all he wanted to do is change his vote. Is that right? I don't think he wanted to get it.
Trust me, I'm trying to get there here.
So, I think that's probably where you're at. I think Counselor Nash has hit the nail on the head.
I need you back to the motion.
Right. So there needs to, there needs to be a motion to either accept it as it is, or a motion to make a specific change.
Or it died from lack of a second.
Or, or there'd be no motion and it would die. Correct.
It died from lack of a second, and then somebody else makes another motion to pass this on to the third reading as it is.
You lost me there, but I'll take your word for it.
I need a council directive of what you wanna do with this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move this to the third reading as recommended as it is.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, let the record show him. Four aye, remain. Move this on to third and final reading by that, you can go now. January 12th.
We're done.
My word. Did you get that, Blair?
We're ending the year on a high note.
Yeah, we are.
I know.
I think some people are having some fun with us in their last parade.
I'll get to that in a minute. Anything on the committees? Additional further?
For the last time, I'd like to say the solid waste is still solid.
Okay. I will move on to Mayor's report, that I've said earlier. I have distinct pleasure this evening to give a presentation to two individuals who have been very dedicated and loyal to this community. Counselor Goble and Counselor Nash. Counselor Goble, I know you a lot longer, all the way back to where you had a little coin flip. Remember that entire, you stuck...
Yeah, definitely remember.
That cost you because of him.
Oh.
But I really appreciate all you guys' efforts, your dedication to this community. Disappointing, in my opinion, of the outcome of the election, but it is what it is. Anyway, I appreciate it. I really do, guys. I hope you stay involved in the city. I really highly respect those who commit to our community and help our community to be a better place to live. And it means a lot to me personally. I hope you stay on, on the planning commission, you, you know, get involved in the budget committee. Please, just stay involved in the city. That said, I'd like to ask you to come forth for a presentation of a little plaque. Who's taking the picture?
Got it?
I do have an idea, I do have a new committee member to start. For the private sector. You go first, you're in here longer.
I have a little clip masked up.
Fine.
Guys, get their smile.
Oh, same time?
Corey, thanks much.
Thank you. I also wanna take time to thank these two gentlemen. They've both been engaged and insightful, and at the same time, both very open to learning. They've both spent hours with me on the phone, trying to understand issues in more depth. And I absolutely appreciate both of them as well. And I'm not gonna go any farther, because we've already had an entertaining evening, and I'm not gonna give Mr. Goble any other opportunities to, to his tomfoolery.
I'm gonna give Mr. Counselor Goble the chance.
Speaking of tomfoolery, no, I would, I would, I would like to say every council has had their trials and tribulations, but we have had one heck of a go-around. We have had everything from the COVID to losses, to neighbor communities' losses with the fires and stuff. And I think this council has not tooted its horn as much as it should have in the past, but we have moved things so far forward, we have butted heads. I mean, Counselor Goble and I actually get along on certain topics, and we all know how that started. But between all of us, we have put together, and the community has put together a very good council. And I thank all of you for all of it, and also for putting up with me for being straightforward on a lot of topics. I know it can be pretty blunt sometimes, but we've all gotten there, we've all, we all are very passionate about our community. So, thank you, and thank all the staff and everybody who's always been there. I really appreciate it.
Like I say, you gentlemen have done a great job for our community, and please stay involved in the community. City manager's report, anything further you'd like to bring up?
No, thank you.
Directors' reports. Anybody have questions of the directors, or the directors would like to bring anything
This is what happens when you don't buy batteries.
You're out of order.
As a reminder to council, tomorrow is turnoff day. We did have over, a little over 100 people on our list. This is also a reminder to anybody who's listening. So we would like to, to try to whittle that down. And certainly, we're, we're willing to work with people and, and help people where they need it. So, just contact us, we'll, we'll do what we can.
And just a reminder, we are still making arrangements for people who need to make arrangements, given everything that's going on, so...
I think everybody appreciates that, especially during this time. Anything else of the directors' reports, questions? I think we have our police chief, and I wanna say thank you, Chief, for a good year, your efforts.
Thank you very much, and I'll pass that on.
City attorney, anything else further? I wish everybody, what's that? Yeah. Wish everybody have a wonderful Christmas and happy, hopefully prosperous new year. Stay safe, stay healthy, and hopefully we don't have another 2020 next year. Nothing further, we will go ahead and adjourn at 7:55. No.